I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, sorry.
Chairman Kelly.
Present.
Legislator Quackenbush.
Present.
Legislator Diamond.
Present.
Legislator Weilts.
Present.
Legislator Beniac.
Here.
Legislator DeChesney.
Here.
Legislator Wheeler.
Here.
Legislator Isabel.
Here.
Legislator Patel.
Here.
Tom, will you do this? Vote for legislation.
It's certified by the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have an add-on tonight, so I'll look for a motion to suspend this part. Tom, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. It's to add on a resolution for the capital project that we approved in the budget. All right. Public comment from the public wishing to speak? No? All right, so moving communications, we have nothing. All right, I'll look for an approval for the minutes, Barb, seconded by Roy.
Sir.
Yes, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Now acceptance of the budget transfers.
Motion.
All right.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Acceptance of the procurement record. I'll look for sponsor, Tom, Barb, thank you. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Any old business. Hearing none, we'll move right along. First is a resolution accepting the public health emergency preparedness supplemental E-Boil Grant sponsored by Wheeler and Patel. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution amending the 2015 operating budget eliminating senior account clerk typist position and establishing an account clerk typist position sponsored by Wheeler and Weilts. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign New York State Indigent Legal Services Grant Contract Distribution Four sponsored by Isabel and Wheeler. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution accepting the 2014-15 Public Safety Answering Operation Grant from New York State Homeland Security sponsored by Isabel and Beniac. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Next is a resolution amending the 2015 operating budget carryover forfeitures of money sponsored by Wheeler and Patel. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution authorizing the county executive to accept burn justice assistance grant, JAG award sponsored by Wheeler, Isabel and Wheeler. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution appointing member to the planning board District Three sponsored by Diamond and Weilts. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution eliminating senior account clerk typist position and establishing new index recording clerk position sponsored by Wheeler and Weilts. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution establishing a full-time director of community services and amending the 2015 operating budget sponsored by Wheeler and Quackenbush. Discuss, discussion. Okay, it requires two-thirds vote, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution establishing senior planner GIS position and amending the 2015 operating budget sponsored by Quackenbush and Diamond. Discussion.
I'd like to put up an amendment. I'd like to amend to eliminate the account, the economic development specialist, and I have the figures, and transfer that allotment to the senior planner GIS. It's actually going to be a cost neutral for the payment, and the county's going to be ahead $501. So it's a position that we might need a second before we can discuss, if anyone would like to second.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. It's something that the department has said that they'd like. It's a service that we haven't had for the county. Not only do we need $40,000 for the sheriffs for the county, but it's something that the whole county needs for the coming elections, for all the municipalities. So having it be cost neutral and ahead of time is the main reason why I'm going to support it. There's been a lot of talk about the jobs. The way I'm kind of looking at it is if you look at putting the cart before the horse, how can we have the, our economic development try to get the jobs and the development if we don't have the planning? So I think we have some wonderful planning in our economic development, and investing in that is something that I fully support. So this position, I think, is very important. And I listened to our department head when he said that this was something that he really preferred. So as there's no one in this position right now, no one would be losing their job. So it's a good reallocation to the monies. It's, there's right now in that line $31,276. So to transfer what is left, the senior planner GIS is $28,588. I also got the number for the FICA, which I settled for, that's $2,187. And that's a total of $30,775, remainder of $501. I'm also very much open to looking when budget time comes, putting this position back in, because I believe very much in our economic development department, and giving them what they need. But sometimes we might need to give them the structures underneath so they can grow. So, thank you.
Bill, since you're here from economic development, would you like to discuss?
Sure, thank you. The position of the, for the economic development specialists hasn't been filled out.
Oh, I'm sorry, because when I asked the personnel department three days ago, it wasn't, so.
My understanding is the job has been offered, and the, I guess what's euphemistically called the pink sheet is being processed, so that has, that's in place. I wanted to just add something else, and I understand you're coming from Legislative Wheeler. In terms of these, the process of planning before economic development, it really happens in parallel, does not necessarily happen in sequence. Tried to explain last time, the positions are sufficiently distinct and so forth, and we really needed to add some capacity. But to do that at the sufferance of the economic development position would leave us in a position where not simply attending to things, working with our existing business base, jumping on opportunities and so forth. You know, we scrambled as it was when we, we introduced a printing opportunity came up, and we scrambled, shifted staff around and everything like that to put that financial package together. So it really need to happen in parallel and need to happen in a very integrated fashion.
I understand that when I, thank you very much, Bill, I appreciate that. After last week's meeting, after I figured out a way to make this cost neutral, I did talk to many people. So there is no one in this position right now, so no one would be losing their job, and that was very important to me. Our responsibility is to Montgomery County at large, and this is a service that we do need. We know that practically now. We have $40,000 that's needed from the sheriff's department. We have maps, GIS maps, that if nothing's been able to be done. So this is a service that we know practically needs to be done. So that's why reallocating these funds that were budgeted, I feel is fiscally responsible. And I have, again, no problem during budget time, coming back and seeing what's produced. It's not, it's not about the department, it's about investing in priorities.
I'd just like to just mention one thing before I open it up to the rest. I spoke with the executive this morning, and we talked about the sheriff has $40,000 roughly of work to be done. That money could be used, since he set it aside to do that work, to help fund this position, as well as, I know DPW uses GIS mapping.
Board of Elections.
Board of Elections. So I think that this could be budget neutral by taking those costs that departments were going to hire an outside agency to do this work that we could do in-house at a less cost. I know that legislator DeChesney had something amended, legislator Weilts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I'm opposed to the amendment. First of all, for a number of reasons. First of all, the fact that a position was recently vacated does not negate, negate its need. It doesn't, doesn't go to explain whether or not the position is needed or not. That's not how we decide the validity of a position. The second thing is that this proposal for an employee to do GIS stands on its own. I think we all recognize that, that specific need. And I understand that, that it's funding and some of the assistance that we could get for that has already been outlined by the department head. So surely we have costs to make the, to make that appointment independent of filling this other position. And the third thing I would say is, is that we really need to be, to be supportive of some of the people who are, who are trying to, trying to do, do a good job at what they're appointed to do. And this assumption, I think, it's, and I'm inferring here, but this assumption that whenever somebody asks for, for a new position, that there's some reason to ask for that position other than good cause, other than they're just trying to do the best they can in the, in the department set that they're running. And so for those three reasons, I'm opposed, I'm opposed to the amendment. And I would support the GIS on its own, and I think we need to support these department heads when they come to us with good propositions like this.
Legislator Weilts?
Well, I guess first, you know, I think this position is very crucially needed. We need a much stronger emphasis on planning in this county, and we need somebody dedicated to doing GIS work, because it's really a powerful, powerful program, software, that we could do a lot better with and made for much more efficient government. Secondly, I think, you know, looking at this salary for a senior planner and GIS position compared to other positions in the industry, I would say, you know, I don't know if this has been, obviously it hasn't been advertised, but I'll just, I guess, put everybody on notice that I think this may be difficult to fill, because this is on the very low end of even a GIS technician. If you want a GIS technician to, you know, that's going to be qualified and have experience, I think this is on the low end, let alone calling it senior planner GIS. So I think if we are committed to this department and we're committed to planning, we need to be committed to paying those positions what they're worth, which we've discussed at other times. Additionally, as far as the amendment's concerned, I think if there's money in the budget already that we could shift to make this budget neutral, I would feel much more comfortable adding a position mid-year if it was budget neutral than transferring it from the contingent account. I understand where legislator Wheeler's coming in keeping it budget neutral at this point in, in the game. I mean, we're, we're in, going into May, and, you know, we had the opportunity to put this in the budget. It wasn't, if this was discussed, I would have liked to have seen it in the budget last year. And, you know, it's, if we're, we're establishing a position for planning, but we as a legislature and executive are not doing the planning to know that we were going to need this by May, we didn't know that we were going to be having this discussion. So, you know, I, I guess unless there's amendment made that would transfer money from other lines to make it budget neutral, if we're going to be transferring from contingent, I don't, while I'm 150% in support of this position, I'm not in support of this resolution, because I think it's pretty laughable that we are, we're saying we're putting a more, greater emphasis on planning, but we didn't do planning ourselves to, to put this position in the budget when it should have been last year.
Legislator Isabel?
I would just say, I mean, I heard that the position has been filled already, you know?
Bill, could you?
The other position has been, you have accepted somebody in that position?
Someone started the job, Bill?
No, no, they've been offered the job. My understanding is that the paperwork has been processed, it was being processed there. So the person is scheduled to start on May 18th.
So you have a name, you have a body.
We have a body.
There's somebody that's been hired, but you haven't done the pink here, whatever, they haven't actually started the job.
I think they've actually gone through, Ken said to me, uncertain as to how the process works here in terms of processing the personnel, but he said that the pink slip has been sent over and is, is being processed.
Where's your information?
From the personnel department.
Mr. Chairman, listen, who wants to go first?
Ryan, you're good, okay.
Just two things. Legislator Weilts, I think, I hope you remember some of those comments that you made when it comes time to, for budget review, because you know that that's my complaint, that we didn't really play a great enough role in, in that. And second, I would reiterate that this discussion about whether the person has been hired or not is, is really not relevant to whether or not the position is needed. I mean, if we, what if we took that approach for the budget with, with every position? Somebody resigns, or takes another position, and we simply don't fill it until we have a budget discussion? It makes no sense. The position should be able to stand on its own, and I, and I think in this instance, it doesn't. We have, we have the need. It's, it's been demonstrated by, by the department head. And, you know, we as elected officials, we come from all walks of life. This is someone, and I'm not making just an appeal to, to, to the person who was in the know here and does that professionally, but we do have to concede a little bit that, that perhaps he knows how, how to run a department maybe better than we do.
Could I just ask?
Well, if I can just respond to that. I listened to the department head when he was here last week, and he said how important this position was. He said how important this service is. And I also listened to another department head who said that he needs $40,000 worth of GIS work. And two department heads saying that they need this GIS senior planner position trumps a position that while there may be an offer on the table, it's a priority to me. And that's a service to the people at large. And in no way is any of this personal, except for that I believe it's our duty to serve Montgomery County. And that's, it's a cost neutral if we transfer this money allocation, because we budgeted it like this. We could have put a simple GIS specialist. The department head came back and is asking us for an elevated senior planner GIS position. After I came back with this proposition, then if there was a offer, an offer isn't a position, so.
Are you here for the sheriff? I have a question.
Yes, Brian.
When does the work, the $40,000 worth of work that is to be done, when?
When I can get the money. I wish I could be the savior to say I've already been able to budget it. I've been looking for grants. None will fund GIS work. But the required, they'll fund the equipment and the software. I have to come up with $40,000 somewhere over the course of next budget season, or the season after, the season after. I'm mandated to keep our data accurate. I've gotten this from 50% to about 75, 80%. I'm supposed to be in the 90s. We don't have a GIS person to do it. I've been relying on a fortunate change in, the state had a, I don't think it was really a grant, the state got funding to do their own updates of GIS. The Office of ITS actually took our data, improved it a little, gave it back, and left us still, still having to, to make the gap. So I reached out to Ken to see, to see if anyone in his office could kind of take the torch and help me get the rest of the way. Because if it wasn't for Ken, my alternative is to contract out. They asked him, it was actually $35,000 to $50,000, and so we picked middle of the road, just for the first year. And then I'm going to be, just to keep our data up to date, as buildings change, people buy, build new houses. It's in the neighborhood of $10,000 a year to keep that data up. It's pretty expensive.
Roy and.
I think Roy was first.
Yeah.
To Duke's point, I agree with him wholeheartedly about why we shouldn't put positions on and not. But when I heard him say that somebody was already hired, I'm not into telling somebody they have a job and then cut it out from under their feet after we put them through training or whatever else you said that they went through. That's all I was referring to. That, that was what my question was, was they hired? And, and he tells me they were, and that's why I went there.
If they've gone through training, then sure.
The offer's been extended and accepted.
They've gone through training, Phil?
No, no, I didn't say that. What I said, and I can be clear, is that the offer had been extended and accepted.
And he went through.
The individual that's in this position, though, is exceptionally qualified and already trained.
I thought you said he did like his, did he go through the thing with the resume?
Well, what they've done with personnel is.
Yeah, you go to the RIA.
No, they've sent the paperwork over. They have sent the paperwork over, over to personnel at this point. They've not, as I understand, I don't think they've sat down with personnel or anything like that.
Right.
Just a couple, couple of notes, Karen. I had talked with Ken Rose, and he said pretty much what the planner and rower said, that, you know, the pink slip had been filed. And the thing, speaking with Ken today and also with the county executive, they're both in favor of this position and also maintaining the economic development position, which goes to legislator DeChesney's point that probably they know a little more about it than we do. The thing, you know, you always hear people are in favor of economic development. Cutting positions is not in favor of economic development. And I've been saying that from day one. We've seen in past legislative, or past legislative sessions and previous Board of Supervisors sessions, what cutting economic, economic development has done for this county. And I don't think I would be in favor of repeating the same failed policies.
Terry, then Brian, and Dennis, Drew, Barb, okay.
Okay, as finance chair this year and budget chair, I'm definitely in favor of having this cost neutral. However, frankly, I was under the impression that you had the, the sheriff had the money set aside. Well, basically, if you didn't budget for it, then there's really, why, you know, you should have budgeted for this.
Well, no, I'm not asking for $40,000 this year, I'm not asking for $40,000 this year. I'm looking for next year. How am I going to get this completed? And that's what I, I reached out to Ken and said.
So, so we got some time, then?
I personally have, in bridging the gap personally, have somebody doing some of the data to keep us moving.
Okay, well, I guess we have a lot of questions here, so maybe we should table it and go back to the drawing board and get all the information. I would like to sit down and make sure that we do have the money to have this cost neutral.
Can I let the others speak?
Sure.
Mine kind of tags right along to it. You know, I know there was a mention of there being money in the sheriff's budget or DPW budget. If, you know, I, I think it would be appropriate, and if at some point there is a motion, I'll, I'll second that, to revisit this once we can, you know, it, our, a lot of our departments utilize GIS, and a lot, most should if they do not already. But if we can transfer money and make this budget neutral mid-year, then it's a no-brainer. Otherwise, I think it's, you know, we, we dealt with this a lot last year when we were coming into a budget we had not adopted, but we adopted this budget, and we should live with it.
Mr. Chairman, the, the only context that we have for, for cutting the position in economic development is that it's temporarily vacant. There have been no other arguments put forward with respect, oh, than that it would be revenue neutral, which would be the case if we cut any other position to pay for it. So there's, there's been absolutely no argument made to eliminate that position. There's no reason given to eliminate the position, other than it would be revenue neutral, which I repeat, could be done by cutting any position. So we need to make some sense of this. And if, if the GIS position is justified, let's just do it. And, and if you can make a justification for cutting a, a position, which you were not willing to cut until this other position was proposed, okay, then it makes no sense not to vote on this tonight, and it makes no sense to table it. If you can support the GIS position, it should stand on its own.
Okay, perfect timing. The reasons I give is, one, it's in the same department, it's all-inclusive. Two, the work's actually needed. We have found literally a need. Now, if the sheriff depart, sheriff's department needs $40,000 worth of work, and our economic development and planning can help them, let's be stronger together and help them out. And we have our economic development director saying, I need this. Not a GIS specialist for 30-something, but a senior planner for 42-something. While it's a little bit less, because we're in the fifth month, maybe this person that they hired can do this work. So if we pass this amendment, I'm not saying somebody's not going to get the job, I'm just doing, I want to do it smarter, I want to do it better. And I'm trying to listen to the two department heads that came last week. It's not personal, this, and the third thing, why? This is to the, this is for services to the citizens of Montgomery County. It is our job to use their tax money for services. And if they want mapping, they want something, that's what the GIS services are for. So it's in every way just a reallocation for cost neutrality. We budgeted it. Thank you so much. No, no problem, no problem. So we need to have the work done. We literally do. I will support this if it's cost neutral. I, I have supported economic development since my first day here, and I always will. And I absolutely said, let's look at it again in budget time. I just don't want to keep throwing jobs after jobs after jobs. And I have tried to reach out to many people, and I'm glad that they talked to all of you, but they haven't talked to me. Maybe it's because they heard of this, but maybe this person that was reached out can do this other job. That's all, yes.
Just to make the record clear, legislator Wheeler, if you could just say what you specifically want to amend, striking and adding, so the record's clear, what the vote will be on.
Thank you so much. I want to amend to eliminate the economic development specialist at $31,276 to transfer to the senior planner GIS position at $28,588. That's for the rest of the year. And the FICA for that, for the rest of the year is $2,178 totaling $30,776 with a balance of $501.
So that's, you're amending to add that language?
I'm amending to change it so it's cost neutral. So there's nothing coming out of contingency.
Eliminating contingency account.
Okay.
The other thing is that 500? The other thing is that five hundred is not completely accurate because you also have to include the other benefits.
Because there was benefits allotted for both? Neutral.
Okay. And, and the other, I just want to throw a comment in there.
Sure.
We, we eliminated the legislative research specialist, which was around forty, forty what, thirty, forty?
Yeah, about that.
About that?
Yeah.
And put it into contingency. The argument for planning.
Yeah, I like that.
Chair, I'd like to call a question.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we need a second or a second?
Yes. A second.
I'll take my question.
Yep.
This is just on calling, whether or not we'll stop.
Yeah.
Cease the debate.
Yeah.
End it. I'm calling the question on the amendment.
Yeah.
This will cease the debate.
Legislator Diamond.
If you vote yes, then we vote.
We're calling the question.
You, you?
You want to call the question?
Yes. Legislator White.
Yes.
Legislator Beniac.
I'm not quite sure. Do we know for sure if there's a person in the position?
This is just the amendment.
You can't debate this. No debate off of the question. It needs a two-thirds vote.
I would, if you could, for a point of order, could we have the county attorney explain? Because I believe it's the first time we've had or a second time on call the question. So everybody understands we call the question and it's voting on.
Pursuant to Robert's rules, when there's a, an ongoing debate and the, a member of the legislator would like to go to a vote and, and discussion, they can do what's called calling the question, which then, for a second and a vote to call the question. If it's a majority, then, then debate stops and there is a vote on the question, which in this case is, is the amendment, should be, is the county legislator in favor of the amendment?
So we're just voting on whether we're going to do that?
We're just voting on ending the debate and going to it.
That is in our rules, it's two-thirds.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I guess.
Legislator Ducesse.
Yes.
Legislator Wheeler.
Yes.
Legislator Isabel.
No.
Legislator Patel.
Yes.
Chairman Kelly.
Yes.
Legislator Quackenbush.
Yes.
Now, on the amendment, roll call.
Well, first, can we re, can we establish a first and a second on the amendment? We have first and second on discussion, but technically now that we have what the amendment will be clarified, let's just get another first and second to make it the record clear.
Legislator Wheeler and legislator.
White.
Yes, White.
Roll call?
Yes.
Legislator Wheeler.
Yes.
Legislator Isabel.
No.
Legislator Patel.
No.
Legislator Kelly.
No.
Legislator Quackenbush.
To explain my vote, no, because I think somebody's in the job.
Legislator Diamond.
No.
Legislator White.
Yes.
Legislator Beniac.
Yes.
Legislator Ducesse.
No.
Fail.
Now, the resolution.
I'd like to pull my sponsor.
I'd like to make an amendment to table this.
I'll second the table.
What?
A motion to table?
She took her sponsor's law, so you don't, you don't have any reason to table.
The resolution's by Quackenbush and Diamond.
Oh.
So.
I thought she was on it.
No. So.
Put it down to Tyrion.
All right.
Motion to table on the floor.
Yeah, so.
Call the vote.
This is on the table.
Motion to table by White and.
Not by. Beniac and White.
Beniac first.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, legislator Beniac. This is on the table.
Yes.
No.
Legislator Wheeler.
Yes.
Legislator Isabel.
No.
Legislator Patel.
Yes.
Chairman Kelly.
No.
Legislator Quackenbush.
No.
Legislator Diamond.
No.
Legislator White.
Yes.
Fail.
Now, I'm, now I'm the resolution. Roll call.
Discussion?
All right, more discussion.
Well, you have to have a discussion if there isn't any finding.
Discussion.
Is this person in iron?
I wish Kennedy attended the meeting tonight to verify whether you hired the person that was basically.
It'd be nice.
You know, I, I thought a little bit about this, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to make my decision based on whether it was planned for in November or not. I think we need, I agree with Duke, I think we need, I think we need to make a decision on, on, if we need the position, we need the position. We don't need it, we don't need it. You know, we abolished positions after we created them, like the, you know, we needed a legislative research specialist. We, we're going to have it. And all of a sudden after.
After we built the taxpayers.
We, after we built the taxpayers, we eliminated it. So there's your forty-one thousand dollars, which makes it cost neutral for this position, I guess, if you want to look at it that way. It's, 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 you know, I'm not going to always be held to, I can't do it because we didn't do it at budget time. I never have and I'm never going to be held for that. So I'm, I'm going to support the resolution.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. I am going to support this against, I, I really don't want to, because I believe that this is absolutely of the Board of Su, the former Board of Supervisors, and this is exactly why I wanted better for this current government, honestly. But how do you spend more than forty thousand for one department alone when you can spend thirty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five politics? That's how. So I'm going to support it. I think it's pretty gross. I know I shouldn't say what I just said, but I did, so.
Thank you.
That's me.
Roll call.
Legislator Quackenbush.
Yes.
Legislator Diamond.
Yes.
Legislator White.
Yes.
Legislator Beniac.
No.
Legislator Ducesse.
Yes.
Legislator Wheeler.
Yes.
Legislator Isabel.
Yes.
Legislator Patel.
Yes.
Chairman Kelly.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving along. Next is a resolution. Are you, are you on set? Next is a resolution approving new collective bargaining agreement between FMCC, Fulton County, Montgomery County, and Full Mount Association of College Educators, sponsored by White and Diamond. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution approving the concept of locating a solar energy farm on FMCC campus for use by Hamilton, Fulton, Montgomery Bosse, sponsored by White and Diamond. Discussion.
Could we?
Right.
I, I think the situation with this is it's been extended to June 6th, so we can hold up on passing the land use agreement in May in its full form instead of just in concept form. We can still pass this through, but, but that's the update.
From last week's meeting, what I took out of it wasn't so, I mean, May was a deadline, but it was more about a couple of points that you needed to clarify. Were they clarified and if so?
In the process of working with Fulton County to clarify. This, this involves about a hundred pages of, of contracts to make sure that aren't conflicting with each other. And I, I spoke with Fulton County this morning, in fact, and they are, they are moving forward with it at the same rate we are and undergoing the same analysis.
So passing the resolution with a concept or not?
Con, a concept, the concept resolution I would not oppose, but the part two to that, I would ask that the, that the county legislature wait until May to reconsider.
But that's not in this resolution?
No, this is just the concept.
Yep. Which Fulton County, correct me if I'm wrong, voted for that last recent.
Fulton County has passed the concept, yes.
So we're, we're good with this one because it's not the step, it's not part two?
Right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution removing county attorney's signature from the resolution format, sponsored by Patel and White. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution amending the 2015 operating budget county attorney, sponsored by Quackenbush and Wheeler. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, abstained? All right.
No or abstained?
No.
Okay.
Next is a resolution amending the 2015 operating budget county attorney, sponsored by Quackenbush and Wheeler. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution authorizing the county executive to withdraw from the Greater Amsterdam Area Cooperative Energy Commission, sponsored by Kelly and Patel. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution authorizing a land use permit for FMCC property for SUNY Research Foundation Weather Station, sponsored by Wheeler and Quackenbush. Counsel has suggested that we move to table this. Okay, sponsored by Barr.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Discussion. All those in favor on tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion to table?
I, I was no, I just noticed a thing when I read the opportunity to ask why she didn't want us to do it.
It wasn't supposed to go through committee, it was supposed to get tabled.
I ta, we tabled it on committee, so it shouldn't even be on the agenda.
Yeah. Next is a resolution amending the 2015 operating budget workers' compensation, sponsored by Wheeler and Isabel. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign a claim for class action settlement for Dr. William P. Grease and Al and Poe Corp. versus Premier Healthcare Exchange West, Inc., sponsored by White and Patel. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution amending the 2015 operating budget refuse in garbage, sponsored by Patel and Wheeler. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution for the county executive to sign an agreement to Tom Warner Cable for a phone service at the Amsterdam Satellite Office, sponsored by Wheeler and Diamond. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign an agreement, Wolf Security, for the installation of access control system at the Amsterdam Satellite Office, sponsored by Wheeler and Patel. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution establishing a petty cash account, sponsored by Patel and Diamond. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution authorizing the county treasurer to distribute mortgage tax money, sponsored by Quackenbush and Wheeler. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Next is a resolution. Next. Ready? Ready, ready? Next is a resolution appointing a member to the audit committee, sponsored by Wheeler and Quackenbush. Discussion. I thank Joe for his service for the month of May and Tom for his service on the month of June. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppo, opposed, abstained, motion carried.
I thank you for filling in for me when I can't make it.
No problem. Next is a resolution approving abstract audit claims, sponsored by Kelly and Wheeler. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion. Are you opposed?
No.
All right.
I just have a question. Did we skip the refuge of the Public Works Resolution?
Eighty-seven?
Yeah. Oh, you got it? Okay. Very good.
Next is, next is the add-on resol.
It was six, sixty-six, sixty-seven?
Sixty-six, sixty-seven was a special meeting, and when these were pre-numbered, sixty-six is going to be like this again. So sixty-seven was this one that was the last meeting.
Okay, moving on, we have the add-on resolution. Resolution authorizing county executive to sign agreement with J M Z Architects and Planners P C, sponsored by Kelly, and I'll look for a second.
A second.
Wheeler. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.